According to old business, approval of three policies. Discussing the last meeting. We have the name. Investment policy, as far as I know, the investment policy, the whistleblower policy, and the social media policies were the ones that I believe are open. Is that correct? Okay. So, how the board wants to proceed. Want to go one at a time?
Well, the social media policy, like I said before, do we really need a policy to behave, to treat each other like humans? Do we really need a policy to tell you that? I don't even, I can't even wrap my head around that. Do we need a policy to tell people not to talk about each other bad on the internet? Because I don't have Facebook or social media, so it doesn't affect me. Do we really need that policy?
Board discretion, Mr. Mayor.
Open for discussion?
Is it required by New York State and are we compliant with it without it?
It was us. It was us who came up with this. We make our own handle.
But there's certain policies that are required by New York State.
I don't know if one of them is right with the hiring checks. I don't know if social media policies were required by Nikon. Certainly different than procurement, whistleblower, investment, those types of things. I mean, I can do a real quick chat if you want. Talk about the other two.
Whistleblower, I believe, is automatic. I know it wasn't in shuttle without me. And I think this rules runs afoul, so of course to have that idea. And I don't think it's a force. I think it's only should protect a whistleblower.
Right, that's what this, if you want to take this one to start with, let me do a quick look. I don't know if that's in there. I don't know if that would be had. Can you get this cut out?
Can you hear? Is this whistleblower policy following what all the municipalities have? Is this the standard?
No.
I don't think we have to change anything. It's what everybody else has.
Did he vote it on separately yet?
We can't hear you.
I said, I'm sorry, I said it would be best if the board votes on each of these three separately. I don't have a mic over here, sorry.
These have been circulated for months, at least a little bit a year. And some of them, we need to be compliant by New York State. A year ago, I sent an email with a list of what we were not compliant with and what we didn't have. Trying to pull it up now because I can't agree with the entire sack of papers today. Because I thought it was a cap on its point. So I thought we were just fine tuning it and putting it up for approval because these were the three that were important. That was my understanding.
And it is. We're here to voting on it, so that's why we're discussing this.
My quick look, which is what I thought, social media policy is not required under state law. It's recommended if you're, there's a lot of utilization of social media by the village, but it is not required by state law. Whistleblower, investment policy, fund balance policy, which was already adopted, procurement, which was, I believe, I don't know if we formally updated that one, but if you have procurement, Deb, you can tell me on that.
I looked at it today. You guys approved it last year. I think I'll review it, and if you have a tweak, I'll just go and tweak it just a minute, and I'll let you know.
Yeah, I thought it was approved last year. So, if you want to go straight requirements, certainly want to do the whistleblower and the investment policy, which they have been circulated. You've all had a chance to look at them previously. You want to discuss them, fine tune them tonight, but those two I would certainly go with tonight.
Sure, all right. Make a motion and the whistleblower policy. Anybody for discussion on this?
Well, somebody want to second it?
Second it?
Now, currently.
Now for discussion? All right, vote. Trustee Ian Berrani?
Aye.
Trustee Picarella?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Deputy Mayor Adolsa? Trustee Noppen?
Aye.
Pass. Carrie. And the investment policy, make a motion? Second?
I'll second.
Open for discussion?
On this one, I know the board has had it for a while. My recommendation is to go ahead and adopt tonight. If anybody finds anything in here that they believe is something that should be changed, we can do that down the road, but let's get the policy on the books. That's my recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
That's why we have it. All right, open for discussion on that?
You have a motion and a second.
Aye.
Trustee Picarola?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Deputy Mayor Adolsa?
Aye.
Trustee Noppen?
Aye.
Carrie. Moving on, new business abstract, A zero nine two.
Social media policy.
I'm sorry, I missed the grid.
I'll make a motion to adopt the social media policy.
I'll second.
Open for discussion? Again, your social media policy, I... I have feelings about this because again, I don't think it has to be written in a book to tell you how to behave. But if that's what you want to put in there, I have no problem with it.
You have a motion and a second. Same comment on this one. Everybody take another look, and if there's something that needs to be tweaked in it, we can do that at a future meeting if the board so chooses.
Okay. All right, we have two motions.
You have a motion and a second.
The second. All right.
Aye.
Aye.
Nate, aye.
Aye.
Cynthia?
Aye.
Carrie. New business, abstract. What else we do? Oh, there isn't. I don't know. I have the grant update.
Do you have one? I have grant updates.
Well, we need to do that for our, yeah, we do need to do that.
What are we doing? What are we doing?
Grant updates.
Okay.
Resending the hydrant motion.
What is that? I don't have that here. What is rescinding the hydrant motion? And what are we rescinding on that? Explain to me. I don't have it here.
Do you want to give trustees, the deputy mayor, the mic, something?
At the August first meeting, I didn't attend, you made a motion to use money from the fund balance to replace all the hydrants at once. Since then, we know that we're working on a plan to do it a different way. So, in order to go ahead with our plan, we need to rescind this motion.
What's the plan?
All right, I'm against that vote. We'll make a motion.
Well, you want to have somebody else make a motion there?
No, I can make it. You make a motion on this? Second on it?
Second.
Open for discussion? Again, this is an emergency situation. I've said it before, and I'll say that. All right, all in favor?
We have a motion. What, can we explain what the motion is again?
It's to rescind the hydrants, the hydrants from taking it out of the monies. The fund balance, to fix everything now, to change it, fix a couple each year until we catch up. Am I correct on that?
I think right now...
It's a lot more involved, but it's not ready.
Right.
The whole plan is not ready.
I think, yeah, I think, Mr. Mayor, the motion is to rescind what they, the August first...
Can you speak up, please, because you, if you hear...
I believe the motion for this evening is just simply to rescind the motion that was adopted at the August first meeting, which directed that all of the fire hydrants be fixed at once with an allocation from the general fund balance, and to rescind that motion. Is that correct? Okay, so now, the mayor can ask for a motion and a second.
Make a motion to rescind the August first vote.
Second.
I thought we had a motion and a second.
All right, so...
Motion and a second.
Okay, take the roll.
Aye. Aye.
Myself, against.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Vote rescinding.
Now the grant update.
Grant updates?
I want to cast this mic.
Grant updates, we missed many deadlines as we discussed at nauseam at the last meeting, so we're going to stay on top of it, starting now, the first meeting of the month. Every month, we're going to briefly go over what grants are available that we have not missed the deadline on, and make a decision at this meeting whether we're going to put in a letter of intent and move forward in applying for these grants. Some are matching, some are not, and just as of once over, there are almost none that have application fees that we're going to use Millennium Strategies for. So, ones we are still able to apply for that we've discussed already are the WIA grant. That's due on the 12th. That's a heavy lift. We do have some of the information available that we need for that, but that's going to be a fair amount of work, so that needs to be decided on tonight. And that's two different grants. There's a New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation Water Infrastructure Improvement Act is the acronym, and then there's an intermunicipal water and infrastructure grant as well. The open space grant is through the county, which I did bring the hard copy if anybody needs it tonight. That's due on the 15th as well, so that has to be approved tonight if we're going to move forward on it. Ones we can share a little more information again on that we've already seen that are not due until the end of the year are the New York State Homes and Community Renewal Plus One ABU Grant Program, which is for accessory dwelling units. And I'm not advocating for, just to be clear, I'm just presenting what's available. The AED grant, which I believe the police department and senior centers are familiar with, correct? And the NYSERDA has a Clean Energy Communities Grants Program. There's the T-Mobile Hometown Grant, which I believe the police department didn't in the past, the village has applied for in the past, so we can talk about that as well. There's the Gary Sinise Foundation First Responders Grant available as well. And I think that's the list of all to apply, so those are for the village. Those are available until the end of the year. But we do need to decide on the WIA and the green space, the open space grant tonight.
They match in grants?
The WIA has a match. All this information is, has already been circulated. I believe the WIA is up to seventy-five percent, and the open space is up to fifty percent.
So, the rest of the plan, where would we get this money?
Yes, so for WIA, we do have a bond that we're currently not using that I think we can leverage for the match if we were awarded and we had a good enough plan for that. I think that's allowable based on the discussions that I've had.
What bond is that number nine?
There's a bond that we have not used yet. Jake?
He's using that.
That's just for sewer.
That's just for sewer.
Just for sewers, not water treatment.
No, that was just for sewer.
For rags removal.
And that's the one, yes, that we plan on using for the rags removal.
But we were applying for WIA for the same items, but we can't use that as leverage for that grant.
Okay, so that's the same, all right, we applied for that grant in the past?
Yeah.
And we didn't get it?
Correct.
So, I mean, if that's what you guys want to do, is try again?
There's always cost.
It's just gonna, because if we do apply for the grant and we don't get it, now that just puts us farther behind moving forwards with the grant. Because we'll have to quit where we're at with the rags removal until we know what's going to happen.
Okay, my understanding was that we could use that bond to leverage for other water treatment improvements. So, I may be wrong about that.
Well, we got to figure out how much it's going to cost for our rags removal.
Okay, so if we're going to put a pin in the WIA grant this year, we've already applied and established like a dialogue with them about it, can we make sure that prior to the end of this year, we go through and look at what projects would be beneficial for us to apply for under this grant for next year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then the open space? Again, this is all in your email. Orange County developed a program to fund open space protection within its jurisdiction. The funding program is designed to fulfill the recommendations adopted in several documents, including Orange County Open Space Plan, the Orange County Comprehensive Plan, and the Orange County Agricultural and Farmland Protection Plan. The program has established, has an established application and approval procedure, including criteria. Blah, blah, it's a fifty percent. The county open space one will provide matching support for fee simple development rights or conservation easement purchase price, as well as closing or sewer chip costs up to fifty percent of the purchase price, not to exceed fifty percent of the appraised value. Eligible applicants are municipals, qualified nonprofits, land trusts, and individual property owners. Municipal applicants are towns, villages, and cities, and this is again due in two weeks, so... Is there green space too that we are looking to gain control of or preserve? Buffers, possibly additional parkland, anything like that?
Why would that first fifty feet along the freeway two eleven?
I don't know. I don't know. We got a four and a half million dollar grant that we have. We were already told by Orange County that any grants that come root is way on the bottom because we've got so many, so...
Well, it's always known if you don't ask, so... And we have four point seven million dollars to leverage for additional millions of dollars potentially in grants, but we have to do that, and these are respectfully, these have been distributed multiple times to everybody. To know the fact that I'm sitting here reading them right now is a waste of everybody's time.
Well, the bottom line is, the two grants we got here cost us nothing. It was between Ronstadt, and trust, and deputy mayor, and Adolsa, and that was a grant for the swing out here for the handicap, come to the picnic tables. They were applied for, we got them. These are all shots in the dog.
They're legislative grants that are very specific, that are already allocated to each legislator in the county for their area specifically marked project.
They're coming from a state that's poor. There's hundreds of municipalities in the state that are applying to these things. We got to deal with stuff in front of us. If we're applying for anything, we got to get these fire hydrants fixed.
Okay, we're going to stick with the business and the agenda, so these two grants, no, we're not moving on. We're going to take a vote, because that's what we decided we're going to do. There's two grants that are available for us to apply to the WIA and the green space.
Any of that money come out of this village? Do we have to pay any money? Huh? We have to match it. Why would we spend money we don't have? We barely got through this year. We had to...
Why would we bond out money from the taxpayers' dime when we could get half of that matched by grant funding for free?
If you don't have money to match it, you don't go for it.
We don't have money to bond it out then either and ask these taxpayers to pay it back because we're failing to plan. That is inexcusable and inappropriate.
Really?
So, let's take a vote.
This was the person who just voted down the fire hydrants. Let's move on.
And he sticks to the business of the village. The vote is not his one.
I didn't come here to argue. Please move on. Make a motion? Second? So, you're going to make this motion?
Motioning for which one? Do them one at a time.
Which one, which one are we up to?
The WIA grant. Yeah.
All right, make a motion on the, what's the name of the grant?
WIA.
The WIA grant, which we would have to have matching funds from the village to pay for. Make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. For discussion? Okay, my thing is this, if we don't have the money, we don't spend it. Eventually we will catch up, I hope. Trustee Ambriani?
I'm sorry, can I just ask a question? Can I ask a question?
Aye.
What's the matching percentage on the WIA, and how much would be the grant award maximum?
Just give me one second. It's fifty percent on the, that's the open space. Give me a moment for the WIA right here.
Because it was seventy-five.
Yeah, it's up to seventy-five percent, and that can be in kind as well.
And what's the, what's the maximum eligible grant amount?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I asked what the maximum eligible grant amount was and what the matching percentage was, if anybody couldn't hear me, sorry.
And I'm not sure if you can hear, but the match can be in kind.
Yeah.
So, Jake's guy's work can be counted as public interest.
Right.
Sorry. There it is. Berries. It's the only one, it's one of the only ones that say berries. But the WQIP is two million.
It's project based, though.
I'm sorry, two billion, here in the big white.
No.
There is no maximum. It's berries, in this criteria here, for money. I don't have the, creeped out because if you want me to look it up, I can.
All right, all right.
Thank you.
Trustee Ambriani?
Aye.
Trustee Picarola?
Twenty-five million maximum worth of grants.
How do you vote?
I vote aye for grants.
I vote against deputy mayor.
Aye.
Carrie, what's the next grant?
Open space grant.
Open space grant.
This one's from Orange County.
And what's the matchup on that?
Fifty percent.
Okay, fifty percent is what?
Can I just read it out loud?
Yeah.
That's always going in time, right?
Yes, can be in kind. I already discussed that, yes.
This might be a great way to put the terms in, in the entry list, because it's open space, you can definitely bring that, and it'd be in kind of work with you, but APW's work on the pandemic, work with you.
I'm not against grants. I'm not against grants at all. It's just when it comes to matching. Bills pile up, taxes get higher, we can't be buying something today and have to pay for it down the road. At least that's the way I run my household. All right, let's move on.
Right, just take, I think you have a moment. Did you have a moment?
Okay, trustee Ambriani?
Aye.
Trustee Picarola?
Aye.
The name? Cynthia?
Aye.
All right, motion passed. All right, abstract number eight.
Just clarifying, the motion was randomly, who seconded it?
Stephen.
Sorry.
Okay, new business, abstract.
For, um, excuse me, I'm sorry. For old business, we have a couple of other items that we want to discuss.
We have two here.
We all have to try it. Yeah, we all have to try the agendas.
New business, abstract number eight zero nine two zero two five, forty-eight thousand, eight hundred fourteen dollars and sixty cents. Make a motion? You accept? Second?
Motion was by deputy mayor.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Trustee Ambriani?
Aye.
Trustee Picarola?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Deputy mayor? Trustee Noppen?
Aye.
Okay, passes. New business, authorize the hiring of the police department for Tyler, at the rate determined by the PBA contract. Tyler?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Yeah, second for discussion? Tyler's a police officer here. He's been here for a long time. He, he's a good guy. His father's a great guy. I haven't seen his father retire, but I think he's a, he'd be awesome here, so... Trustee Ambriani?
Aye.
Trustee Picarola?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Deputy Mayor Adolsa?
Aye.
Trustee Noppen?
Aye.
Welcome, boy. Now, let me get a little further on that. In the police department here, he's recommended by a chief, not the board. The chief recommends him. The chief recommends him, so, um.
Tyler Brier, you solemnly swear that he will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York. And I will faithfully discharge duties of full-time police officer according to the best of my ability.
So we lose one prayer and we get another one.
His entire family's sleeping. The entire family's sleeping.
Motion. Motion to set the public hearing on October seventh. We're changing the speed limit on Boyd Street from thirty to twenty-five. Second? All right, open for discussion.
So I can prepare the local, is that the entire length of Lloyd Street or is it section?
Yeah, there already is for some reason.
So we want the entire?
Please.
The entire street to the twenty-five?
Mm-hmm.
We're gonna do seven thirty on October seventh?
Please. Uh, make a motion? You already did, okay. Debbie Noplin? trustee Ambriani? trustee Pickarola? Myself, aye. Deputy Mayor and Dulcet? trustee Noplin?
Aye.
Okay, passed. Reports from department?
At the last meeting. What? At the last meeting, the board authorized approving the contract for TM Brennan for the HBAC at the senior center. And we talked about a condition to put in there that if it wasn't done by a certain date, that there wouldn't be any payment. As I stated in an email, that we need to act on tonight. After discussions with the village's engineer and with representative contractor and representations that were made by Orange County Community Development, I recommended that we go ahead and change that, uh, change that motion to as long as, excuse me, the work was done by the end of November, Community Development will pay for it. So I requested and I'm requesting tonight that someone make a motion, Mayor, as we, as you and I talked about, I believe, to just amend the prior motion so we can go ahead, give the notice of award with the condition that it will be approved, uh, I'm sorry, will be completed by the end of November. Community Development's gonna give us the money. And there's still a seven hundred and fifty dollar day penalty in the contract if they don't finish by that date. So I would ask the board to amend the prior motion to allow that.
Superintendent, do you have anything to say on this?
No, I don't.
You okay with this?
Yep. Microphone coming back.
Make a motion for what Will said?
I'll second.
trustee Ambriani?
Aye.
trustee Pickarola?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Deputy Mayor and Dulcet?
Aye.
trustee Noplin?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we move on to additional new business.
Yes, the microphone.
Before we move on to additional new business, um, there's old business that's lingering that we have not gotten to again, which is the, um, one of them being the handbook.
This is not on the, uh.
What is the? But it's outstanding old business that's been put up. So I'm asking the attorney while we're here.
That's not the attorney, I'm the mayor. I'm the mayor, not the attorney, I'm the mayor. What do we, we're not gonna slip something in here. What is this? It's not on the agenda here.
It's, we already discussed having it on the agenda every month.
It's not here.
Will.
You're not, I'm the mayor.
I'm allowed to speak to the attorney whenever I like to start making very much.
So I don't know about this.
Will, why has it not been distributed?
I'm the mayor. I'm not getting into the middle of the interview.
I'm not in the middle, I'm asking the attorney a question. Are you reviewing to answer it?
But we're not gonna go off the script here.
I do not have to ask your permission to ask our attorney a question.
You can ask your attorney whatever you want, but you're not going off script here.
When will we be able to review the handbook finally for approval?
Clerk and I are finishing up the changes that she wanted. And presumably at the next meeting. That's why it's not on the agenda, sir.
Thank you. Very simple. And the wastewater treatment plant feasibility study discussion.
That's not on the agenda either.
The events policy. That we've discussed multiple times. The sheet for events that we've talked about, looking at multiple times, months and months and months now.
Debbie was out, saying she's not able to get it right with his name. That's why it's not on the agenda.
Okay. And setting another, uh, setting another meeting for, uh, the opinion of the Evans Board. So I haven't gotten any answers on that.
This is not on the agenda and you cannot just do this.
I have no other recourse except to ask here because no one will answer me, so that's what I'm doing.
That'll be. I have something on that from council and I'll be sharing it with the board.
Okay, thank you.
Reports from Department of Health? Joe, you wanna go first?
Sure. All right, um, so we got a couple of things going on. Obviously, school is starting on September fourth, which is this Thursday. Speed signs out there, just remember when it does drop down to twenty mile an hour in that zone. Otherwise, it's a thirty. In August, we had two hundred eighty calls per service, which is starting to drop down from the summer, which was a high for us of almost four hundred last month. We are all set for GMD. It's shaping up to be just as good as ever. And tractor parade turned out to be a success, no, no issues there. On the nineteenth of this month, we do have a state coming down to hopefully certify the juvenile room. So we certify the juvenile room, which gets us a little closer to accreditation. And that's all I got.
The signs are good to go. Just so you know, I've just have to, with Will, to get the language over to some of the ones in the same fashion as the LPRs. But other than that, as soon as that's signed up on, the order's in.
And the LPRs are moving forward, it's just awaiting the end of this month.
Joe in?
So September eighteenth, we have Blue's Canine Rescue coming down to do a presentation on dog life prevention and educational presentations with dogs. Uh, September twenty-fifth, creative writing class. The thirtieth is our pumpkin needle felt class. And their leave aren't till October, but they're like right at the beginning. First four Thursdays in October, we brought our intro sketching workshop back. And October seventh, we are having the year exams down there again.
Thank you, too, man. Jake, you're up.
Okay, I guess there was some concerns on the, or some questions, I should say, the D E C report that we got. On the report, it says satisfactory. Talking to other engineers and superintendents and stuff from the, from the E C, satisfactory is considered excellent. They're never gonna say, it's, they're never gonna use the word excellent. But they said usually everybody, normally it's unsatisfactory and there's a list of reasons. So I apologize, I used the word excellent, but I should've said satisfactory. Truck sixteen is, they're working on that, they just started repairs, so hopefully that's gonna be back soon. Transfer switch at the sewer plant failed on us Sunday, Sunday morning. I had to have one of my guys come in, an electrician. They were able to get it till today. Had an engine, uh, our generator guy came in, along with Bob, our electrician, to switch the shop. We had no choice, we have to, have to do something with this switch. This switch is when the power goes out, it automatically picks the generator on. I, I can't stress how important that is. If the power goes out and nothing turns on, we're gonna be in a world of problems with sewerage everywhere. So, um, they're looking into some prices. Soon as I hear anything, I'll let you all know. So we can figure out what we're gonna do with that. I just also would like to remind people, grease, rags, then disposable wipes, I know they say flushable. They are, yes, they go down the toilet, they do not break down and they cause havoc. Matter of fact, Sunday afternoon, I had to call three more guys in for a block, which they pulled out probably fifteen pounds of wipes. So please, I know they say flushable, don't flush them. And then I'll get ready for Montgomery Day, everything's going nice and smooth. And, uh, that's all I have.
I have a question, Jake.
Go ahead.
Is truck sixteen the garbage truck?
Yes.
That's thirteen thousand dollars.
Yes.
That truck sixteen?
Yep.
It is in the mayor's message not to do it, to flush it.
Okay.
We do have that in there.
Yeah, it's.
Let me put that APB down, that really works.
Yeah.
You did just send this out, you emailed with the report? And I know you said that you wouldn't understand it. Do you have time?
Not this week. How about next week? No?
How, what minute?
Okay, yeah. Yeah, this Montgomery Day in a short week, it's, it's pretty handy.
How's Clifford the big red truck doing?
Clifford the big red truck, he's doing great. He's chewing everything up. He's well fed. Everybody, he pug the trash out, he's loving it.
Very cool.
All right, uh, Tracy, you wanna tell us anything you got calling?
Um, September nineteenth is the parents' night out. And the car show is September twenty-first. That's it for this month of September.
Thank you. All right, kind of the trustee reports. Cynthia, you wanna go first?
Sure, um, attended the, attended the Orange County Association Town, Villages and Cities. Sheriff Arteta was there and they brought down the new sheriff's flycar, which was amazing to hear about because it's just an additional thing for when they respond to calls. They have the equipment for lifesaving onboard with the new CPR machine that they could hook up and how it's an additional help for Orange County. And they went over, like our chief did, a lot of the amount of calls that different villages have and that the sheriffs respond to. So this is just one extra lifesaving option out there for us in the county. And that's really all I have since our last meeting.
Met with Senator Rollison and then followed up with both he and Assembly Mark regarding the road situation. So I'm, I'm happy that that's going to move forward. I think we're gonna need to keep our finger on the pulse of that one and keep everybody accountable. But I'm, I'm hoping that we can report in the next couple of months some forward movement on that for the 2026 fiscal year. I reached out to the town of Monroe supervisor regarding their wastewater treatment plant alleged odor issues. I'm sure that most people sitting in this audience has read that article. Um, I found that to be interesting, so I wanted to get, um, his take on that. I'm waiting for a response. And as well as, uh, the town of Crawford about their pickleball courts and some alleged issues that were going on there to see that, what they're doing, um, to address it and, and things that they're seeing so we can make sure we're, you know, doing best practice and, and in keeping with those other municipalities around us. I did speak with the attorneys regarding the binding nature of board resolutions and many residents about their concerns about the conduct of this board as a whole. And some of it is embarrassing to me myself. And I hope that we can all do better, um, myself included. So it was a very humbling two weeks in between the last meeting to hear from residents how they really feel about some of this stuff. And attended webinars on water, roundtable discussion on economic development, and conducted inquiries with other municipalities regarding their use of New York Forward funding. I'm hoping in this, um, in the spring, before we're really implementing projects, we can do some field trips as small groups to go around different phases of other municipalities like Port Jervis and Towne and Cornwall that have received New York Forward funds and see how they've implemented them so that we can make sure we're really, you know, using it to the highest and best use. And I did send over to the clerk a bunch of S O Ps that I hope we can discuss at an upcoming meeting for some things that will streamline and take some of the emotion out of some of these questions and answers. And there was one question I had. And then last meeting, we did have comments from quite a few, uh, local residents. And I, I believe between everyone on this board and the attorney, most of them have been addressed. So if they haven't been addressed from last meeting and you're here again tonight, um, I will wait after the meeting if there's something else you would like to, meaning communicates to the board or any of the other board members to communicate to each other about something that hasn't been addressed that you already brought up. Because I think we really need to make sure we are dialing in on the questions that are being asked. That's all I got.
The August planning board meeting, seventy-one to seventy-three Clayton, the Hanover Development. They reopened the public hearing from twenty-twenty-two, reviewed their renderings, and they needed to reaffirm themselves as the lead agency. They already received their height variance and they don't believe the building's gonna go more than thirty-five feet. Project is part of the New York Forward and as such has been asked to construct sidewalks connecting two-eleven Bridge Street via Charles. The applicant will need to work on the building inspector regarding the property at sixty-two Charles Street because they unfortunately have constructed a fence in the public right of way that'll have to be fixed before anything can go forward. Granted the site plan approval for the extension of the pathway place due to the moratorium, so they need a more time. And seventy-seven Clayton is set for a public hearing for amended site plan in September. My research this month, I, I obtained some silent pickleballs. I'm trying to find some solutions and talking to other municipalities on ways we might be able to defer it. And I tested them out this weekend, their phone, they do not make the bad ping noise that you hear with the pickleballs. So I'm gonna keep on trying to research it and see if that's an option. I think enforcement of that would be a nightmare. And so my recommendation, I took, I took, I looked right at chief and he said that. I took record, um, some measurements of both the tennis court and the pickleball courts, and they are very similar dimensions. And I think something we might wanna look into is moving the pickleball courts back with the other ones because that sound barrier that naturally creates might be a solution. And then bring the tennis court up, one, there's less traffic and there's one group versus four on it. So I just think that might be a, a solution. You're not losing any of the things that we put on the village and there would be minimal cost as far as changing it over. And that was my. That's it?
Thank you. Okay, um, the front porch here in Village Wall, everybody's seen it? That's in-house work that was done by PBW, especially Frank Palera. He's a carpenter by trade, he's excellent. And the whole cost of that was two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eleven cents. That's by keeping it in-house. The tractor parade, two hundred and sixty-seven tractors, forty more than yesterday. We've advertised General Montgomery Day on local radio stations. Uh, that's, we should get a good turnout. Kevin Canelo is our grand marshal. Joe, I'm sure you already know, uh, put the garbage trucks on both sides. God forbid some idiots come down here and. Compaliance, that's the insurance company who, uh, who checks us out, gives us, last year we got what? A thousand dollars or a limited back? Six thousand dollars. Compaliance walks around our village, looks at all the stuff that's going on here and then gives us an award. This year, we were rated perfect. There was no problem, no workplace losses or anything. Safety inspection, we're doing great, satisfactory, we can't say excellent. Now let's get into the sewer plant.
Can I ask you the nine questions? Can you please just remind me what time it was step up? For that, I'll bring what time it was the freeze start.
That'll be, I'll be doing a robo-call on that, but ten-thirty is lineup, eleven-thirty is. Nine-thirty is lineup, ten-thirty is step up, step up. Excuse me, step up. But I'll be doing a robo-call on that. Now I wanna hit on the sewer plant here. Now I wanna hit on the sewer plant here. I have thirty-five copies of Monroe's situation that's been in the paper. Everybody's welcome to take one. I have a, uh, a luncheon coming up with the village of Montgomery, uh, village of Monroe's mayor. His answer to me was, you're in front of this, stop it. He said he inherited when he became village of Ma- of Montgomery. I keep getting him, uh, Monroe's mayor. He said it was already there, he's dealing with it. He said airplane park stinks. I'll be going down there tomorrow, I ride down there with my kids on, uh, through heritage. He said the whole area, it's sludge, it's backed up, Woodbury's involved. He goes, it's a mess. I told him, I said, I've shut it down here. He says, well, stand your ground. We're gonna be having lunch, we're gonna discuss this more. But I wanna give folks an update on the condition of the sewer plant. I've still ordered the superintendent of the Department of Public Works not to let any civilian agency do any kind of study down there. Reason being, I have not signed the contract with anyone. I'm the mayor. I wasn't aware of this. I was aware that they wanted a study, I know the papers said that I wasn't aware. Oh, we knew about this, we knew about this study. Randy Wilber and Kevin Canaro were on the board. We were like, we don't want this. So I was aware of this. The only thing I was not aware of was two trustees elect and a trustee going up to the super, to the supervisor of the town and talking to him about it. What I planned to do when they came on board was have a work session in front of the public discussing this. That didn't happen. So because this shady deal, I've shut it down. I've shut it down, no civilian is gonna go down there. There was, the old board, like I said at the time, we didn't see any reason for that. And years ago, this study came up and the mayor then didn't want it. Now all of a sudden, they want it. Call it a study, quote whatever you want. It's too big for a mayor and four people on a board to decide this. This needs to be decided by the village of Montgomery, not five people up here. Why? Look up what their housing got by ShopRite. Well, it's supposed to be seniors, it was supposed to be veterans, now we don't know what the heck it is. All done without us knowing, all done without us knowing. I will not be a part of that. One moment, like I said, it was for seniors and veterans. Now, who knows what it is? If we don't learn from Mon- Monroe's mistakes, then we're bound to repeat them. That's my say on that. I know if a court order comes in and I'm ordered to open it, then I will open it. However, right now, as the mayor of this village, that I was elected by the people, I'm not opening it and I'm not having no civilian company come down here and look at it. Our plant is running fine, not excellent, satisfactory. We don't need them, they need us. Thank you.
And when you get that court order, when you get that court order, because you will, who will be at that, who will be expensed to? It will be to the taxpayers of the village of Montgomery because you cannot refuse to uphold the duly voted will of the majority of this board, which it was voted on two times. I just wanna be clear.
Just understand this, we are not more powerful than the residents. That's what you seem to not follow. You think you're more pow- hello? You think you're more powerful than the mayor? You think you're more powerful than the residents? The residents elected us to protect them. I just told you what happened in Monroe. When do you understand that the residents run this village? They elect us.
Correct, as a representative democracy. And you know who's gonna have to pay that price at the end of this? Myself, Cynthia, Steve.
Then if, that if it was so- I have the floor, I let you speak. If it was so good, then why did you meet behind the scenes? If it was such a good deal, why did you meet behind the scenes? That's it. That's it. If it was such a good deal, you should have had it in front of everybody here.
You're putting this village at risk for a lawsuit. You are not upholding your oath of office and it is going to cost the taxpayers money for that, going to cost the taxpayers money because you're failing to act and you're politicizing something that is a small cost to have information to make an educated decision that we haven't even discussed yet. We have to plan for infrastructure.
Let's let the public speak. It's a lot better than if we let it go through, then what would happen? Open comment.
I'm sorry.
Guys, please come up and say your name.
The minutes setting before we answer.
You gotta read the C V S.
I don't do that.
Karen DeCrosby, one-sixty-eight Water's Edge. I was very happy to hear tonight the words fire hydrant because it has been a solid month since the, uh, issue with fire hydrants was raised. It was raised as a crisis and nothing has happened since. Uh, I heard you say at this meeting that it was, there was a plan where the hydrants are going to be repaired over years. I hope that's not the case because there are residents in this village, including me, who have fire hydrants near them that are not operational. They really can't wait years to do that. And if it was a crisis to begin with, again, understand why it took a solid month before we would even talk about it again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Reynolds, seventy-six Weaver Street, Montgomery. I don't even wanna touch the fire hydrants. That's, that's stupid to quote that down. I'll let somebody else talk about that. I wanna speak on a variety of topics. I know I'm wasting my breath, but maybe, just maybe, my words will get through. Hopefully this board will actually figure out a way to answer the constituents of this village rather than the infighting. I brought up last meeting about two things, Jimmy Quibbman laying in the weeds and thirty mile an hour speeds sign we had at postal office. Neither has been dealt with. I understand that you're doing a public law on that. If you need a lesson on how to solve problems, let me know. I can meet with you and solve both of these within a couple of hours. My motto has always been do it, do it right, do it right now, which I stole from a schoolteacher, Mrs. Goldberg. Speaking about the thirty mile an hour speed sign, just so you know, Railroad Avenue has thirty miles an hour from Boyd Street to Spring Street. And coming in from Spring Street, it's thirty miles an hour all the way to wherever it goes. You might wanna look into that. Maybe we have a village law that says there's no, no speed limit above twenty-five miles an hour. Maybe you wanna do that and cover all the bases instead of this piecemeal stuff. Grants, I don't know where the misinformation comes in, into play or if it's miscommunication, but there's no way a grant writing company is gonna apply for grants just because they think it's good for us to do. They obviously need direction on what to do and looking for infrastructure, building, parking, et cetera. The sewage treatment top- topic. I'm in favor of this study to be done and as Bernie Holman suggested, let the town pay for it. If they think that this is beneficial for the village, let them show us the benefit and how this com- this combined service would be beneficial. I know there was talk about smells and other concerns, which we should worry about and how we, we should at least listen to proposals. We have all seen the evolution of technology and engineering has changed things in our lives. Outhouses and septic systems are now replaced with municipal systems. Those systems have become much more efficient in breaking down waste. It is to safely discharge into the environment, just like simple things in our everyday life, like light bulbs. Think of how that has evolved in our lifetime, LED lights, solar lights. Let's stop living in the past and, and go into the future. The senior citizen issue, I don't know where all the details of this, but here's some information. The facts, not personal views, should be addressed. I do not know, I do know from personal experience that money cannot be given to a nonprofit organization unless it is for the public good and there is needs that be to contract and strict oversight of the money. I do believe that there was good people on the previous senior citizen board, just as there is now on the current one. Maybe you can sit down and discuss this and figure it out and do it in a proper fashion. Trustee reports, we here, I attended this lunch and dinner training seminar. You all know that most of this is just eating and conversing with other villages and towns. I'm not disagreeing with it, networking is a great thing to do, it makes the world go round. But instead of hearing about I did this, let's hear about we attended. And better yet, how about we have a workshop and address the problems that come before our meeting instead of discussing them here? We have very intelligent residents in our community that offer great insight. Some useful comments have come from Stacy Hillman, Rob Saladin, Karina Tipton, Silver Van Woldy, Don Berger. Okay, maybe not Don. Just kidding, he's a New York Giant fan, so I'm not gonna hold it against him. But truth is, their ideas and comments are worth listening to even if you don't agree with them. Stop with the infighting. This is on just about every topic that comes before this board. Good, listen to me for ten more seconds. I'm, I'm not against the type of person with, which, now you screwed me up, now it's gonna be fifteen seconds. It's, it's two sentences. Stop with the infighting. This is just about every topic that comes before this board. I'm not against them type of, I'm not a us against them type of person, which is what this board has been for years. Let's stop it. I would like to read an old Greek proverb, old men plant trees under which the shades will never set. Let's plant trees.
Okay, right up to Mike.
Helen Finn, I live on eighty-seven Roosevelt. Can I hear you? Hello? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Helen Finn, I live on eighty-seven Roosevelt Avenue. If I misunderstood what you guys were talking about earlier, I apologize. But the scuttlebutt in the village is we have fire hydrants that don't work. And I understand tonight that you're not gonna fix them right now. So I'm in the village, across the street is a fire hydrant. My house goes on fire, the fire hydrant doesn't work, my house burns down. Do I then turn around and sue you?
Yes. Yep, and F D H standards think they will be held accountable.
So are you guys waiting for a lawsuit? Just putting that out there to you. The other thing I question is the sewage. I just wanna know very simply, the town of Montgomery has an issue with their sewage plant? How does opening up the village sewage plant, how does that benefit the village? So why are we doing it?
I'm not allowing it to be this way. I'm wanting to-
I, I don't understand. I don't understand how you're gonna let house burn down. And I don't understand why you're gonna open our sewer plant. So you guys can give me an answer, I appreciate it. Thank you.
See you on your face.
Randy Wilber, Senior Street, Montgomery. I was one of the two village representatives that were at the meeting last fall with the town of Montgomery supervisor and their engineer. Our past and present DPW supervisor was there as well to discuss what we thought was gonna be an informal discussion about the sewer I M A, which seems to be the topic of discussion. I just wanna share a few points, this has nothing to do with the feasibility study that's been floated out there, and my own opinion, but that's not what I'm talking about tonight. Just so people know, this is a ten million dollar expense. And when Member Canaro and I were confronted with that, took it very seriously as members of the board. Outside of other people's concerns, we've heard come up with sludge trucks, odor, risk of discharge into the river. We don't wanna turn the walled hill into the Hudson River as we see it in Newburgh, obviously. They're all legitimate concerns. My number one concern was, what's the benefit to the village? And when I asked that question, uh, the county guy looked at it like I had two heads. Maybe I did. But it wasn't answered and it hasn't been answered since then. The village has a perfectly functioning, although outdated and in need of an upgrade that we can afford to do on our own. What's the benefit to the village? The benefit is to the town. The town has an outdated sewage plant on four-sixteen and Neely Town Road that is at the end of its life and they're desperate to send the sewer somewhere. Instead of making the necessary investments-
Failed sewer plant.
Failed sewer plant. So instead of manning up and spending the money they need to handle their own crap, sorry, they wanna dump it on us. We have a plant that was designed for this village, purpose-built and located where it is years ago, and it's fine. Why are we getting into the sewer business? You heard the complications that DPW goes through with a power failure. Those will be multiplied by at least three times. How does the sewer get here? Well, they're just gonna plug into our pipes at the edge of the village, right? What about the infrastructure under the ground? Can they handle the additional flow? What about the pumps that have to handle it between here and there? That's our responsibility. I have the I M As right here. But the most concerning thing is, the, the town gave themselves an out after fifteen years. They propose a thirty-year bond to cover the ten million cost. Five million of it comes from this village. Thirty-year bond. At fifteen years, they give themselves the option to discontinue the agreement with three years' notice. Who's gonna pay for the next fifteen years of that five million dollar bond? Besides having a plant that is now three times too large and underutilized, which is not efficient in the world of sanitary wastewater treatment. Why do I know this? Because I had a summer job on a wastewater treatment plant back in Maine, thanks to my dad. A little that I know all those years ago that actually come to benefit me. So all I'm saying to the board is this, we can suspect where your loyalties are, but at the end of the day, you're a village resident, you work for village residents, you spend village resident money. Do it responsibly and if you can't answer the question as to what is the benefit to the village, then don't do it.
Rob Saladin, Village of Montgomery, Montigny Court. Uh, first of all, uh, I'm just gonna say what I'm saying. So there's a contract between the village and Montgomery Group, AKA Bismarck Project, executed by former mayor Resha and the Montgomery Group for them to pump their sewer into our S T P. The following provisions exist. I have the whole contract here, it's at Village Hall, take a look. Number five, the village represents that the S T P has sufficient capacity to treat the project sewage and the village's agreement to receive and treat the project sewage is not dependent on an expansion of the treatment capacity of the S T P. In their report, it says sixty-seven thousand one hundred gallons of tail come out of there. They had the study done at, the engineers evaluated the impact on our sewage plant at one hundred thousand gallons per day and it passed. Number eight, in the event the village desires to expand the S T P to add additional capacity, the village, prior to any submission of an application to agencies with jurisdiction over such expansion, shall evaluate the village's need for an expanded S T P for a period of at least six months subsequent to the point in time when the project sewage had been treated for a period of six months. In other words, we can't even ask the state and apply to expand our sewer treatment plant until we've taken six months' worth of their sewage there at Bismarck, which hasn't even put a shovel in the ground yet, and then studied it for at least six months subsequent to that. So you guys gotta get on top of what kind of deals were made and what they mean today. Number eighteen, here's an out for you guys, pay attention. The village, at its option, may void disagreement in the event that the town shall not have granted the Montgomery Group's petition within eight months of this agreement's execution. For what? For the establishment of a sewer district encompassing the entire project, one-hundred ninety-one acres, and an intermunicipal agreement between the town and the village with respect to operation and governance of such sewer district. Provided however, that Montgomery Group may request reasonable extensions of the period, and such requests shall not be unreasonably withheld. Eight months of, since two thousand and five. Is there a water district that, a sewer district that's been created for them by the town? Is there an intermunicipal agreement between the village and the town to run and that to operate and governance of that sewer district? If not, you have an out, from what I can see, just reading plain English. Next, um, about the grants, I just want this, I'm gonna go off what I was gonna say because of the grants. Trustee Pickwell, maybe you guys email each other with grants and information, but we don't know what it is. So please don't dismiss the idea of talking about it in front of us because you emailed each other. We need to know what you're talking about. As far as the sewer treatment plant, this says right here, I'm, I'm just reading the tea leaves. They can wait this out, oh, by the way, there was a second attempt to this with faith that the former mayor made, takes a two million dollar payment we would get and turns it into seven installments of three hundred thousand twenty-five years later, up to twenty-five years later, without an adjustment for inflation. I'm sorry, you don't remember the meeting, so please don't interrupt me. Other people went over and they went over, okay? Don't tell me about my time. Thank you.
Don Berger, I'm actually gonna bring it down a little bit. I have a couple things. One is the front balance to the hydrants that you guys talked about earlier. Unfortunately, the great majority of the people couldn't hear or understand a thing you guys are talking about. And that's a shame. We've been talking about these little things for years, and this village has yet to take care of this problem. You really need to get on, because we can't hear. We tell you that every freaking meeting, and you just refuse to do something about it. You could've used this mic at that table also until the public comment came up. But you guys just refuse to do it. I don't understand why. I have a request. The park benches by the playground, Jake, they've been bent for years.
The, on Dunn Drive?
The park.
Oh, these ones?
Yeah, right by the playground. They've been bent for years. I don't understand why we don't straighten them out. Moms and dads can't sit on them.
Because they probably can't be straightened?
Well, take them out of there then, and put new ones in. Years. I bring my kids down there all the time, Jake. For years, they didn't like that, and you know that. And they really need to be straightened out. It's really terrible. Another thing, the senior center here, why can't we just say, for once and for all, meetings are gonna be held at the senior center? Why do we gotta play this game that I gotta look at five o'clock tonight to see where this damn meeting's gonna be? Because that's when it was posted, late in the afternoon. Why can't we just settle it? I don't get it. Just settle it. Senior center. People don't have to run around all over the place and, you know, try to figure out where are you going? I know I didn't know today where I was going. Why don't we do it? And why can't we post it on Friday? Why do you gotta wait till four-thirty in the afternoon on a Tuesday? I don't get it, guys.
Next up.
Father Vance, one-ten Jefferson Road, Village of Montgomery. I'd like to speak to you, to the people here, and anybody that might be watching at home regarding the fire hydrants. I served in the fire service for over fifty years. For twenty years, I was on an NFPA committee with the last ten as a chairman. NFPA stands for National Fire Protection Association. They write building standards, code standards for both fire departments and municipalities, building construction industry, electricians, et cetera. They are not law in a lot of instances, but they are the standards that they're in. Whoever is responsible is held accountable to, should there be a failure. August first, there was a meeting, a special meeting that was held, in which the hydrant issue was brought up. It was discussed, and it was passed. There was some confusion with regard to one vote. And that vote was subsequently changed according to the minutes of the meeting from August first, to be unanimous. Additionally, regarding the hydrants, the fire chief, Robert Reynolds, read a letter explaining the urgency of this and what his requests were for accountability. He requested that updates be provided to the fire department and the public regarding the status of the hydrants. Now, for those of you that aren't aware, I'm gonna read a list of the hydrants that were provided to me by trustee Noel. In case you live near any of them. One-twenty-eight Snow bumping Court, one-eighty-four Dunn Drive, Senior Street at Route two-eleven, one-sixty-three Senior Street, one-hundred Railroad Avenue, one-sixty-one Mason Street, Charles Street just west of Walk Hill Avenue, forty-two Elizabeth Street, one-sixty-four Clinton Street, Mason Street at Route two-eleven, Goodwill Road opposite Spring Meadow, two-three-six Robert Street, and two-four-five Goodwill Road. That's a total of thirteen hydrants. It was requested at the meeting that the hydrants be identified, and that was requested by the fire chief, whose letter was supposed to be included in the minutes of the meeting, but I didn't find it. It wasn't there. As of yesterday, I rode around, and I took pictures of all the hydrants that are in disrepair. I'll be more than happy to share copies if anybody wants them. Three of the hydrants have been marked, out of service. Out of service hydrants are a safety issue. If some clarification is required, it can be considered an emergency situation. Something changed, and I might have missed it. You people retracted the unanimous vote from August first. What did you do? Please explain it to me.
I wasn't present.
You weren't present, the attorney wasn't present. So tell me what happened from August first to today.
I didn't change my vote.
Well, why aren't the hydrants gonna be addressed? Who's gonna notify the fire chief, and who's gonna notify the public? Can anybody, and who's responsible for notifying the public? Where's the transparency with all of this? I spoke to the mayor, I spoke to the trustee, everybody was concerned about the hydrants. When the discussion was had on August first, everybody... I got it, thank you. Everybody was concerned, they voted unanimously. What happened between August first, in one month, and now? And why aren't all the hydrants identified and marked?
Well Jake, would you be able to...
I was... My own fault, I didn't get around yet to check. I sent somebody out to mark all the ones that were out of service, and he told me they were done. So this...
All right, that's all right.
I mean, it's a simple, if you don't have the right markings, put a trash bag over them.
I'll take responsibility for that.
Okay, so who's gonna report back to the fire chief? Is this now gonna happen? I think, according to the minutes of the August first meeting, you were gonna take money out of the emergency funds to fix the fire hydrant.
That's still what I wanna do, and what I need to use later also, I want to, I want them to direct us what's the most important. Go, go, go. Word says it's the first. That's what I wanna do.
Well, how did they get this far down the road in the first place? Fire hydrants are supposed to be repaired as soon as you know they're out of service.
This is not a powerful mayor position, so the board can override me.
That's not my point. My point is, what happened between August first and tonight? I might have misunderstood what happened tonight. You retracted your votes? So you're not voting to repair the hydrant? That's gone, is that correct?
Correct.
That is correct.
That's what I got.
Okay.
None of them have been fixed, yeah, I guess not.
This is, this is public comment. Absolutely major comments. We'll leave it to the board there. My understanding is, there is a plan we can put together to deal with fixing the hydrants and replacing those that need to be done. And that will be forthcoming. That's my understanding.
Okay, who's responsible to notify the fire chief and the public, updating us with regards to all of this?
The board will do that. That is on the board, and they will do that.
The board in general, or one or two individuals?
You present a plan, a draft plan, and then ask the board for communication or to have it, so that we can...
The clerk will contact the fire department, know when we do the stuff.
Yeah.
We'll do that. Debbie, will you be able to just let the fire department know when we do things? Like we did on Jefferson.
Is the fire chief's letter gonna be made part of the minutes? He read it publicly. From the August first meeting.
I can add it.
I thought I read that.
No, we did not add it.
I do read that at the minute.
I can add it.
It was read out loud.
I did, I read it out loud.
What'd you say?
It wasn't in the minutes.
Okay, it's read out loud. Sure, sure.
Sure, we'll be waiting. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, now that it's your minute.
Mark Malcheski, two-fourteen Tompkins Road. I have three comments, so I'm gonna make this quick. Number one, and may I ask for Tompkins Road, Mead Street, Congroy, number of streets that had thirty miles an hour change to twenty-five? Wonder if that'd be addressed. Number two, the fire hydrants. I spoke about it last meeting. This is an emergency, it needs to be done immediately. I don't know, you said you have a plan, but you don't tell us the plan. I'm just piggybacking off everyone else, but if the fire department comes out, and the fire hydrant isn't working, and they gotta go another thousand feet, and the house has more damage, and the insurance company doesn't find out, they won't pay the insurance, and if it's state farm, and the guy next to you has state farm, they're gonna take away his policy. This is a major issue. This is not just property, it's life as well. Minutes count, seconds count, okay? It needs to be done immediately. I don't know what's going on, I don't know whether the vote was taken away. You said you had a plan, and then you didn't say what the plan was. Tell us what the plan is. When is it gonna be done? It should've been done yesterday, not tomorrow, okay? Period. End of story, that's done with that. Last is the sewage treatment, sewage thing, okay? I'm for the plan. It needs to be done. I think that we should go ahead with the study. But I think it should be a regional sewer district outside the village. We shouldn't have a sewage district. First of all, we're the most populated center in the town, one of the most populated centers. You don't put sewage treatment plants in populated centers. You put them where the stink, nobody smells the crap, okay? So you put it away from populated areas. We should be talking to the town and whoever else to get out of the village someplace else. I think it starts with the study. So I think this study is important. Now, Mike, I'm gonna ding you on this pretty badly, okay? Because I don't think it's right what you're doing, okay? They voted on it. You can't pick and choose what resolutions and laws to enforce and which ones not to, okay? So whether you like it or not, I think you should open it up and let them take a look at it, okay? You can't pick and choose, setting a bad precedent for future mayors. What if, if another resolution comes down six months in your life, you're just gonna ignore it? Can't do that. Anyway, the last comment is, and we know we touched on it, it was in the paper, there's a well that has forever chemicals in the village? What's the story with that?
This is what?
A well in the village that has forever chemicals. It was in the Lower Hudson Valley newspaper. You guys not aware of that?
In this village?
Yes.
Who's the mayor?
Well, maybe somebody should...
Orwell?
It didn't say Orwell, it just said village. There was a list in the lower Hudson, lowerhudson.com, it said forever chemicals in Hudson Valley, Village of Montgomery. Didn't say, it said one well, it didn't say where, or what chemicals, it just said...
Can you give me that article?
Yeah, I'll give you the link. If it's incorrect, let's clear it up, but it was kind of alarming to be on that list.
I'm pretty sure the Department of Health, the toll meter, is the issue with it.
Okay. Okay.
I'm not sure if they all test the forever chemicals.
I'm not sure if they all test for forever chemicals. I'm not sure, it's one of their regular tests. It was a kind of a newer issue, I think, like a Teflon chemical, something like that, so. But anyway, and that goes back to working together, work together. But those are my points, just...
Well, I agree with you on the, I agree with you on the, I was working on the team. Had it not been behind closed doors...
Okay, I'm not gonna go there with that.
Well, that's the thing, because I have the village to represent here.
Okay.
I know it's tough, it really hurts, it's kinda scary. And you know what? And that's scary of people in my life. I'm here to represent the Village of Montgomery. I also had two developers in this village say exactly what you said. You wanna have a study? Put it out there, not here.
Put it out, because you're gonna have more sewage districts.
Mark, I respect you, I respect you a lot. But it's gonna stay my way from a court.
And I'm gonna, I respect you, I'm gonna tell you I think you're wrong, because that's my comment, okay? I think you should, if the resolution's passed, you can't pick and choose which one you want to do.
If it's not above board, I wouldn't.
Okay, but I do agree, it can't be here, it's gotta be somewhere outside the village. It should be regional, because it's only gonna be more development, and there's only gonna be more sewage districts. And if we get hooked up, like I said in the last meeting, you're never gonna unhook. You're never gonna sit there and say, oh, now just cut the line, and like, you know, we don't wanna take you to sewage, you're hooked forever. And we shouldn't be, and if it's modular, you can expand it with another module. So it's just, it's gonna be a mess if you let it come here. Anyway.
Thank you.
Good evening, Doug Handush, two Ranover Street. I'm just, I'd like to just back up a few statements that were made tonight. Number one, as far as the, as it goes to the sewage treatment plant, I am against it. Because I, for the life of me, cannot find any benefit to taxpayer and village residents by expanding this sewage treatment plant to benefit the town. If the town poorly planned what they wanna do, that's kinda on them, not on me. And I don't really wanna see my taxes go up to support somebody else's sewage. So, that's where I stand with that. I can't really add to some of the statistics that were brought up. On the fire hydrant issue, and however, I do have a background in it. And I think they will need to be corrected immediately. Because if you're gonna do it piecemeal, two or three hydrants at a time, how do you pick whose hydrants are getting fixed first and whose hydrants are getting fixed last? How do they feel about their children losing protection or their elderly family members? So I think this is an issue you're gonna have to address, get it taken care of, and hopefully make sure that it's done pretty quick, you know? And again, on the sewage, everybody on Ranover Street kinda feels the same way. We've all talked about it. And people on Bridge Street, it's not, it's not something we really wanna see. It's a rarity to smell anything from the sewage treatment right now. Once in a great white while, when weather conditions are just perfect and everything. But what's gonna happen if we expand that place dramatically? And the point that was brought up tonight about, what if we make this expansion, they back out? Now, we're running a plant that's bigger than what we need. Too many variables, yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
James Kieran, three-nine-four Angelo Drive, Montgomery. First of all, thank you all for the work you do, all the trustees, mayor, deputy mayor. I know it's not easy, but we do appreciate your time. You're working, but we're not working. So thank you very much. And I am really excited to see how many people are filling this room now. It took us a while to get out of village hall, but obviously, we have people that are interested in our process and what's happening in this village, and that's a good thing. I obviously don't agree with everyone here at all, but I'm glad that we have different voices here. We have dissenting voices, everyone should be heard. I wanna thank Tracy and Lori for all their doing for the volunteer pieces for us. That's where we get our community energy. So thank you, two ladies. I will help when I can do things. The sewage treatment piece. My concern is about representative democracy again. So, we voted, trustees, and unfortunately, the board shifted and changed for some reason. So there was a vote, and the vote came down, the majority agreed to do the feasibility study. I'm not really understanding, and no one is, how the mayor has the power to say, I'm not doing what the board wishes to do. Not only that, but to also put ahead of a department in a really weird, cringey situation of having to block people to come and inspect the sewage plant and look at it. I know where you are, I know where you're standing, I know you're not gonna shift that, but I think this is a real issue of precedent. So what happens when the next mayor comes along and wants something and doesn't get his or her way? And the mayor says, I'm gonna ignore that. I feel really strongly about that. I'm gonna try to get the community all roused up and be on my side. And I'm not going to agree what a representative democracy process is. I'm just gonna say no because I feel like it. And you can threaten me, and I'll wait, and you'll probably take me to court, and I'll probably lose, but I'm gonna do this. I find that absolutely mind-boggling for me. And that the person representing the law sitting at the table is watching that as well. I'm not understanding this at all. I know in representative democracy, the majority rules, and things happen. I know people who still have strong feelings about it, I totally respect that. I know some people might even have better information than I do about it. But I do know that this board voted a certain way, and that vote should be carried through. I do know about two. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Speaker?
A little louder. Yeah, a little louder, okay. My name is Rita Santo. I'm at fifteen Chandler Circle in the town of Montgomery. And I'm here tonight to represent the Advisory Board for Senior Citizens Center, Inc. I'm not speaking about fire hydrants or sewers, but I am, thank you, James, speaking for volunteers. For the past eighteen months, the mayor has used the public forum to denigrate the advisory board, calling it to question the reputation of its volunteer members. All of this without evidence. Claiming over four decades of experience in... Claiming over four decades of experience in law enforcement, and with a steadfast allegiance to the United States of America, the mayor destroyed 42 years of successful senior programming, all of this without a shred of evidence. As recently as July 22nd, we were again attacked publicly. The mayor claimed that he had to report the senior board to the comptroller, because according to his honor, the numbers simply didn't add up, and we have that on tape. But taking the moral high ground, he also prayed that the comptroller would not find anything, anything wrong, and we also have that on tape. So here's some good news from the mayor. His prayers have been answered. The numbers actually do add up. After receiving over 1,000 pages of financial documents from the advisory board, the comptroller's office did not find anything. The case has been closed, and it's been closed since January, and the mayor should have known that before once again denigrating the senior board on July 22nd. And here's some more good news. Investigations by the state attorney general have also been closed. The numbers apparently add up there as well. The advisory board is not under investigation. We are not responsible for any financial hocus pocus. We did not cleverly embezzle money from the village, and we took no savings from the retirement accounts of the elderly, as previously publicly stated by the mayor and council. When the mayor, deputy mayor, and trustee Wilber targeted the advisory board, they used baseless, skewed, incorrect information. These actions have caused irreparable harm to the well-being and reputations of a well-functioning board of dedicated volunteers. The seniors did not deserve this. The taxpayers did not deserve it, and our collective families and friends surely did not deserve the backlash. This should never have happened, and it is my great hope that it never happens again. Thank you.
I would like to meet you and say, I have to abide by the comptroller attorney general's office words, and that was to say nothing. It's only to say nothing. They said, do you not say anything? They did not put this in any book. They went to the attorney general's office, not by me, it was the comptroller's office. They sure enough sent it to the attorney general's office. The attorney general's office contacted me, and I said I did not recommend this to go to the attorney general's office. They said, do you think the prime is being permitted? I said, that's up to you. I did not send it to the attorney general's office. Others told me, not to say anything to the comptroller, I don't know why you're doing this, but that's up to you.
Well, I'll tell you why I'm doing it. Because, because you accused us without any, without a shred of evidence. You had this idea, and you did not come to us with the idea. Instead, it's...
I'm not gonna do this.
Well, but it has to be clear, because he's been accusing us of things wrong. You did not, you did not have anything that you had to show us. And we should have been the first people... We should have been the first people that you showed them. We're your neighbors, I've known you for 40 years, you give me communion on Sunday. How could you do that to me? How could you do that to us?
The whole thing was a hoax.
Should not have happened. Should not have happened.
All this happened because we inappropriately turned and identified a member of the audience implying that I made the statement that they embezzled, or implied that they did something wrong. If they read what was written, it was in the form of a question. I was looking for information that was never given to me. I never accused anybody of anything, was very careful about that, because I know the implications. To sit here tonight and have somebody of that caliber pointed me and say, I accused them of it, I wanna be on the record as that never happened. And if there was, provide it.
I have proof, buddy, I have proof, and, and...
Ladies and gentlemen...
I'm not getting into that, I just wanted to clarify my name.
Ladies and gentlemen...
Thank you, thank you.
That's it, all of it with this. I was instructed, I was instructed after the discussion, I was given advice from the comptroller's office, how to correct and run this senior plan. That's that. The whole thing was a hoax. It was bull.
Like about the robberies, you dare? That was a hoax.
Yes. Yeah, that was a hoax.
Ladies and gentlemen, folks...
I have, will you put it on tape?
Okay.
Hey, Tom Steve, 205 Tompkins. Last month, trustee Embrietta came to the planning board meeting, so I asked Steve, I said, Stephen, you were talking about double, triple, quadruple course. He educated me on it, and it's only going one way up for these analyses, all right? But the bottom line is, as Jake said, our plan is satisfactory. We're a small village, we have a very efficient plan. Former superintendent of Public Works, Buddy Nelson, told me before he retired, we have never been fined by the D E C for exceeding our daily discharge limits. We're fine, as far as a small village with an efficient, small plan. And what the problem is, not our problem, it's the town's problem trying to ram their problem down our throat. So, I'm with Mike on this. I stand against this analysis. Hey, listen, you wanna do analysis, what are you gonna do? Benefits, save 7,500, the town's gonna give us. I say, we pay 15,000, we own our own analysis, and it's only in the scope and scale of what's provided to the village, and nothing to the town or expansion. Thank you.
Anybody else? Upcoming events, Labor Day, the village offices are closed, General Montgomery Day, number six, September 11th, remember, it's not 11, FDR's car, or long, I'm sorry, 6:00 PM. September 19th, Paris Night Out. Thank you, that's a good one. September 21st, the cause show, September 23rd, friendly reminder, next trustee board meeting, and I give public comment factor, if necessary. Schools open in two days, so drive carefully, thank you very much, everybody, good night. Quick motion to adjourn. Is that it?
Andy here, you guys still do meeting? I was...
So Randy has the question. Of the minutes for April 22nd, will they be changed? As soon as I can find the original, that's the answer, I will check it down. Okay, but we don't have, because we voted. My question was, do we have to see the minutes and then will you move them, or it's sufficient to just vote to amend them and then that's it?
Quick motion to adjourn. Steve?